Go ahead.
Announcement made that inadequate notice of this meeting has been given and it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10,04-6 at Sec. of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Please call the roll, Nora.
Mr. Jaskiewicz.
Here.
Mr. Kaplan.
Here.
Mr. Masarala.
Here.
Mr. Peric.
Here.
Mr. Reddy.
Present.
Mr. Willand.
Here.
Chairman Iwakane.
Present.
Also have our board planner, Mr. Chadwick, our board engineer, Mr. Holloway, and our board attorney, Mr. King.
I'm present.
Start off with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and sovereign. At this point in this evening's meeting, is there any member of the public that has any business to be brought to this board that is not on this evening's agenda? I hear none and see none. We're gonna go right into the agenda then. Application 2130, Andrew Cornwallis, Fort Fox Chase Drive. This is a application's carried from December 8.
Were you both sworn previously?
Yes.
So you're, you understand that you're still under that oath?
Right.
Have a seat. Mr. Chairman, they've been previously sworn.
So, you were here last month. You wanna bring us up to date?
Last month, we were at the hearing for the C variances on our property for an extension on the back of the home. We did not have the engineers' inner-office memorandum, which we have gotten at this point. We received after the last meeting.
Okay.
Sat down with Paul Neoff in the engineer on January 6th.
Okay.
And went over everything, all rules, regulations, and restrictions that have been put forth by the town engineer, and we are gonna go by with all.
So there were five items on his report.
Roger.
And you're gonna address the stormwater runoff?
Yes.
Okay.
We're going to, the stormwater runoff in number 1 and 2 are basically the, you know, addressing the runoff due to the square footage of permitted, impervious coverage, and we will have a dry well installed.
Okay.
Number, the third one is the existing shed.
Right.
Which will, we will have be moved.
Okay.
Number 4, the drawing, the slightly encroachment on the easement.
Yes.
It was my drawing. You see, look at the plan. It's actually offset from the corner of the house just for that purpose by our architect.
Okay.
So it was just my, my drawing on the plan that was submitted, which was on the line.
Didn't do too well in high school drafting, huh?
Actually, I was a drafting major.
Don't tell us what skills system.
Yeah. That's, that's why I joined the military. And number 5, all dirt will remain on the property, all soil.
So what's, what is the correct amount, percentage of impervious coverage?
I have not gotten a revised.
You know what's greater than 36?
Recount. I haven't gotten an official recount yet, but I will, I'm going to be installing the dry well that will account for, which is 8 feet by 6 feet, 8 feet wide in diameter by 6 feet deep, which will account for 1,500, 1,500 square feet of runoff.
Where's that going?
It will be in our, on our property in the backyard, in between the addition and the pool area.
And the soils are conducive for a dry well?
Roger.
Do you have to test any testing results, or is that part of the plan?
No, I, I.
It's part of the plan.
Yeah.
Okay. And that will be subject to review by the town engineer as well as, I guess, the board engineer. Chaz, would you want to review that?
No, I don't need to.
Town engineer?
Frank.
Mr. Chadwick, any questions?
No.
Any other members of the board have any questions on this application?
Uh, yeah, just, I wanted to ask the question, where did you say the dry well was going? Between?
Vicinity of the pool and the addition, in between there.
Okay, okay. All that's speaking, okay.
Where's the shed gonna be moved by?
I haven't decided if I'm going to totally remove it or bring it on to the property yet.
If you bring it on to the property, you know you're gonna have to deal with the setbacks.
Roger. The addition of the increased runoff.
Yeah, but I mean the setbacks, you have, there's, there's prescribed side yard setbacks and rear yard setbacks.
Okay.
And I don't remember off the top of my head which, which is what, 3?
6 and 6.
6 and 6.
Yeah. It's gotta be 6 foot off the back line, 6 foot off the sideline.
Okay. Roger.
Otherwise, if you're gonna destroy it, then that's moot.
Roger.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Any members of the public have any questions of these witnesses on the testimony given this evening? I hear none, see none. Nothing else you'd like to add, right?
No, sir.
It also can't be an easement.
Yeah.
Oh, right.
Roger. Don't do that again.
Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application, in support of this application? I hear none and see none. What of our members like to make a comment about this application?
I think our applicants have complied with all the requests we had in the prior meeting, and I will be voting in favor of the application.
So may I frame a resolution?
Sure. Application 21, column 30, Andrew Cornwallis, Fort Fox Chase Drive, block 97, lot 4-01, zone R3, recommend granting a C variance to construct a two-story addition, contracted Section 430-10, I, Section 430-35, columns 10 and 13.
Second, ready.
Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Jaskiewicz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Masarala.
Yes.
I apologize. I couldn't take your vote tonight. Peric?
Yes.
Reddy?
Yes.
Willand?
Yes.
Iwakane?
Yes. Results of the variances granted will memorialize this at our next meeting, and then you'll be free to get your papers and proceed. Enjoy. I hope everything comes out right.
Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome.
Good job.
That's what we get paid for.
Application 2160, Kotadia, Kotadia, K-O-T-A-D-I-A. 18 Lawrence Road, seeking variances to construct. The proposed item's listed on attached page.
So you're gonna be providing testimony?
Yes. You have my pardon.
So who's gonna provide the testimony?
You.
Okay, could you raise your right hand? You swear a firm testimony you're about to give before the board's truth self you got?
Yes, sir.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
Rahul Gajipara. R-A-H-U-L.
He can sit, he can sit back up here.
Last name is G.
R-A-H-U-L?
Yes. Last name is G-A-J-I-P-A-R-A.
And you are the?
Son-in-law.
Sons, you live at the subject residence?
Uh, no.
Okay.
I live nearby.
So you're just a fact witness?
Yes.
And is your, is this your father?
Father-in-law.
Is your father-in-law gonna testify?
Uh, he's the, oh, sorry. Son-in-law, father-in-law's over.
Okay, is your son-in-law gonna testify?
If he needed to.
Hey, it's your application.
Right, no, he doesn't need to.
Okay. And you're not the owner of the property?
No, he is.
Okay.
He's over there.
Okay.
But, um, due to the language barrier, that's why I'm speaking behalf of him.
Okay. All right.
Does he understand English?
So-so.
Okay, so, we have a side yard setback, 14 existing, 6 allowed, 1.5 proposed. Both side yards, 21.1 existing, 12 allowed, proposing 8.6. Accessory side yard, 14 existing, 6 allowed, 3 proposed. Plan and design standards, driveway setback, 4 feet, 5 feet allowed, 1.5 feet. Yards and courts opened deck, 22.97 existing, 24% allowed, and 34.94 proposed. Building coverage is 20%, allowed is 20%, proposing 30%. Impervious coverage, 35.76, you're allowed 40, and you're proposing 43.47. You're proposing a two-story addition, a one-story addition, two-story addition, two-story addition, one-story open porch, a deck expansion, deck stairs, reconfigured driveway, walkway, landing and stairs, second-story addition, second-story addition, second-story addition, and two air conditioning units. You are in a?
R4.
R4 zone. Your lot is 6,000, you have a conforming lot. You gotta explain to us why you want all these variances. You got a conforming lot.
Um, the only thing I have is that we have an extended family that is growing.
Speak up.
Right. And that's why we're trying to expand the house.
Well, how many people live in this house?
6.
6 people. You're adding bedrooms?
Yes, on top. We're taking out the bedroom on the back.
Is it a two-story house now, or a one-story?
It's a one-story.
One-story house now?
Yeah, like ranch.
It's a ranch. And you just can't go over the existing house? You have, you're going out in terms of?
Yeah, we're, we're trying to make it look nice with the garage and everything to, for the future, but that's about it. That's, that's what we thought of doing.
Why, why didn't you go out the back and avoid all these side yard variances?
Because in this particular case, we thought it'd be easier to go up on top instead of going back.
Let's start over again.
The house is a one-story house.
Right.
Are you gonna make, existing house, two stories?
Yes.
Then to the side, as you're facing it to the right side?
Correct.
You're gonna put a two-story addition there?
Just like a center portion of it, not the whole.
So the, the?
The first, the bottom is just the garage.
Okay, so there's like three squares along the right side of the house as you're looking from the street. Front side, the front square is the garage.
Yes.
The second square, the middle one, is a two-story addition.
I guess it would be between the garage and, and the, the other kitchen part that we're trying to do in the back of the garage? Because we're not trying to expand on top of the garage, we're just adding the?
No, I didn't, I, I moved beyond the garage. The garage is gonna be one-story with crawl spaces.
Right.
And the next portion is gonna be two-story. You have bedrooms upstairs and expanded downstairs.
Do you have pictures?
Yes, he's our architect.
I'm the architect, can I?
Yeah, he'd be able to answer one.
You have to get sworn in.
Yes, sure.
Sir, can you raise your right hand?
You have to, put your hand.
Can you raise your right hand? You swear a firm testimony you're about to give before the board's truth self you got? And for the record, can you state and spell your name?
I'm the architect.
I'm sorry, spell that again. Spell your name slower.
But now, T-A-T-E.
And you are a architect, and your licenses are in full force and effect. Your license in the state of New Jersey? And you've provided testimony either before this board or other boards in New Jersey?
That's right.
You're sworn, you can have a seat. Mr. Chairman, the witnesses sworn as an expert architect.
Right. That's what I said. How many kitchens in this?
Just one. So the idea was that, you know, they wanted a, a one-car garage. Right now, the existing house doesn't have a garage, and the only place where we can add the garage is the, the side of the existing driveway is. And then, you know, due to their space need, you know, they have the two bedrooms on the first floor, which is not enough with, with kids and, you know, other family members. So we are expanding on top of the existing house, and then a little bit of additional, you see on the, on the side with the three deck panels or three squares we're talking about, is just the bathroom and the master closet.
So, Mr. Chadwick had asked, there were three boxes on the right side. The first box is a garage.
Correct.
The second box is a two-story addition?
Yes, it's a, it's a garage on the, on the first floor, and then just pop out for a bathroom on the second floor.
Above that second box?
That is right.
And what's in the third box?
It's the, the garage, and then, you know, the kitchen, a little bit of kitchen, kitchen and the pantry extension.
On what floor?
First floor.
So how could it be a kitchen and a garage?
So, so the garage goes about 3/4 of that full length of what you want with those three.
And then there's the kitchen extension?
And then, and in the middle?
Yep.
It goes to the second floor, and what we're using that area for is master bathroom and a walk-in closet.
Okay. And you said 6 people live in the house. To be more, or it's going to be 6?
No, no, they are, you know, the existing.
So no more coming, it's just a?
Yeah, yeah. Two kids, you know, ten, and then the son and daughter.
Okay.
So, that's why they need more bedrooms and, and additional garage, so we're adding garage.
Is there a basement in this house?
Yes, there is.
And is that a finished basement?
No, unfinished.
And you don't intend on putting any bedrooms in the basement at all?
No.
Because there is access to the outside, right at the back, there's a, is there?
Yeah, it's a, it's a balcony door. It's a balcony hatch.
I wanna go back to the question I asked before. Did you explore expanding this house by going up to the back?
Um.
Because you've got?
One area.
A foot and a half for a side yard, and I don't know if there's anything in the, that area that's that small.
Correct, but for, for garage, you know, I mean, uh, you know, in order to add the garage on the backside, you know, you're gonna increase the impervious coverage significantly.
What about the living space? Could that have been in the back?
Say that again, please.
You're, you're tying your expansion to where the garage is, and I'm suggesting that even added living space, bedrooms, et cetera, could have possibly come out the back of the house. Because you're doing basically a gut on this house, correct? You get done?
Yeah, I mean, first of all, we are trying to save as much as we can, you know, and cutting.
Are you gonna try to live there while this is being done?
No.
So you're doing a gut on the house.
Have you discussed these plans with your next-door neighbors?
Yes.
And what did your next-door neighbor say when you told him you're gonna be a foot off his property line?
They didn't have a thing to say, whatever you get.
Can you speak up, please?
How close is his house to the edge of the property line on the other side?
So that's a little different because, you know, that, this is a second house from the corner, so their front door is on the perpendicular street, so, you know, this is basically a buddy in their, their backyard. Their side yard in the backyard.
You know, it's a beautiful drawing. It looks, it looks like a beautiful home. It's just a little overbuilt for the property.
Baby, can I see it? Can I see? Oh, that's it. Yes, I know, I'm sorry.
So, let me ask you, what kind, if I can ask a question. The, right there where you have the proposed garage, is there a fence there?
Yes.
With the one, between the 1 and 1/2 foot, there'll be a fence, and then a foot and a half between the addition?
There is existing fence.
What kind of fence is it?
Chain link.
Chain link, yes, you can. Four-foot high?
Yeah.
Let's stay. That's on your property or your neighbor's property?
Uh, I believe that's neighbors, I'm not sure.
Not on your property. So their fence, that's in your opposite.
So you pull into the driveway?
And it, it's right on the property line, I mean.
You pull into the driveway, and to the right is their backyard.
Yes.
And they have a shed right there?
Yeah. Not right there, but all the way in the back.
In their backyard?
Yeah.
So the shed would be to the right as you pull in the driveway?
Right now, yes.
So we have no information from the engineer, the town engineer, on the water issue, the impervious coverage?
Nothing, I don't see anything.
Nothing was received.
I mean, the existing is, the driveway is kind of, you know, goes to, towards the back of the house, so in terms of impervious coverage, you know, we are not increasing as much because it's all the, the driveway.
I need to explain something. I'm not trying to be a hard ass, but there's a lot of variances with this plan, but the only thing you comply with is a lot size. You have to have some specific reasons why you could not design this plan so it was more in keeping with the regulations. Had the statement that a garage needs to be at that corner is, doesn't have a lot of weight.
No, I understand, the garage.
Have you been to board meetings before and done variances?
Yes.
Okay, so you know what I'm talking about?
Yes, I understand, but, you know, if I move.
And I asked you the question, was this a full gut? And you said, by and large, yeah. So then you could go almost anywhere you want in terms of the first floor redesign. And that's what I think you need to overcome.
I mean, the, the basement is, we are not changing there, right? And then the first floor walls, you know, we're gonna save as much as we can, you know?
Right, the outside walls.
Yeah.
The inside is gonna be gone, pretty much. So you can just rearrange and put kitchens where you want? I mean, you gotta try to keep plumbing and do certain things to whatever, but?
The existing load bearing line, you know, we are keeping it. There's a, there's a wall between the living and the kitchen, we are, we are not keeping that, you know, that, that stays.
Okay, I, I like the house, it looks very nice. Clearly, we're not the family of comfort. 6 people are living there now. How many bedrooms you have now?
2.
And how many you gonna have when this is done?
5.
5, okay.
4, yeah, 4, 5.
4 plus a study.
Because there's a library and everything.
Library is not a bedroom, okay. So, back to the point, you're here asking for a lot, us to approve a lot of variances, okay? And the ones I have the biggest per, problem with are, is building coverage by 10% over allowed, okay? And impervious coverage, de minimis, but then also all the open yards and deck things, these are, these are significant. And I, and the 1 foot 5 off-side yards. Can that not come in a bit or quite a bit on the side yard?
It has to go out the back.
So?
I, I know, it's gotta go out the back.
Out to out, you know, out to out, the garage addition is about 12 feet. So, you know, that's the minimum you need for a, for a, you know, single car garage, parking car.
Is this a single car garage?
Yeah.
Did you think of bringing the garage over and in front of the house? You're about, you got a 26-foot setback, and you probably, you got 10 feet to the edge of pavement. You're about 36 feet off the road. So, you could probably pull that garage to the front corner of the house, because you've got an additional setback there. I can't, there's no dimension here, but I'm guessing it's about 6 feet. So you're, you're about 30-plus feet off the road and plus another 10 feet. I think you could put the garage off the front of the house, it would obviously alter your, uh, street-side presentation, but, and look to see if you can go to the back. And you get basically the same size, uh, so you'd have the, the space you're looking for, but you're asking the board to give a variance for 1 and 1/2 feet, that's?
I think what you're hearing is that the board is not enamored with this application. My recommendation at this point would be that you ask us to carry the case, go home and re, look at your, look at your numbers, look at your, what you have available, and maybe come back with a revised plan.
Okay.
Because I don't hear a lot of positive out here. Believe me, I've been doing this a long time, I don't wanna see.
I can't hear you, can you?
I'm sorry, I don't wanna see you be denied. I want, you know, I want you to see, get, to get what you need.
So where are we having problems?
You're having problems because you're putting, you're too close to your side yard or something.
Okay.
And you're asking for, you're asking for 17 variances on a, on a conforming lot. This is a conform, when we have people who come in with a 40 by 100 lot, and, and, and that lot was created back in the 40s or the 30s or whatever, and it's got inherent, inherent problems, we, we tend to be a little bit more lenient on setbacks, maybe, you know, the coverage and things, because we recognize that you can't, you can't build a 2022 house unless you get a little, but you've got a conforming lot.
In most cases.
So what are the 17 variances?
No, this is, this is, there's an exceptional amount of variances asked for residential.
What are the 17 variances?
Doesn't matter how many.
Excuse me?
It doesn't matter how many are. There's not enough for us to approve tonight, I don't think, is what the chairman said. It'd be good for you to redesign and come back.
So what can we do to do this?
Talk to your, talk to your architect. He's, he's the, he's, he's the man.
I think you understand, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. When can we carry this case to Nora?
If the board's open to an April 6th, half-hour special meeting?
Sure.
We could do it then, otherwise in May.
No, do, let's do another 7 o'clock. They, they.
Can you be ready by April 6th? You gotta get your plans in here 10 days at a time.
Uh, yes.
Okay.
And you'll give us an extension of time if required in writing? You'll have to give us an extension of time. And you will not have to notice the notice going on tonight. Is there anybody here who's for this application? Any member of the public here for this application? Okay.
This is for you, not for the architect. This is for the, uh, application, the, the person applying, but?
You don't have to notice anybody, you know, you don't have to renotice. All you have to do is give us a letter of extension. Motion to carry this case to?
I'll move.
On April 6th. No further notice, and with whatever extensions are required. Thank you, Mr. Willand. There a second?
Second, ready.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we'll see you on April 6th. Okay, this goes into the drawer. Application 2184, Kevin Wentworth, 29 St. Peter Road, C variance to construct an open deck, landing stairs, wooden ramp, portion in right-of-way.
Can you raise your right hand, sir? You swear a firm testimony you're about to give before the board's truth self you got?
I do.
And you're Kevin Wentworth, owner of 29 St. Peters Road, block 66, lot 11.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir, you're sworn, you may have a seat.[1637.32]
Good evening, Mr. Wong. Good to see you again. So the applicant in this case is seeking two variants, not just having to testify about the project and
Just for the record, could you just put your name on the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. Robert Wong from Bendel, New Jersey.
You're the attorney for the app.
I am. So, Mr. Wentworth, are you ready to go?
Yeah.
Identify yourself for the board and tell them your plans for the house after it's finished.
Kevin Wentworth, I was raised in Mount Tabor. A number of brothers and sisters and nieces that live in Mount Tabor and my plan to be retired there.
Describe the current status of the house.
Right now, it is.
Could you speak up, please?
Right now, the house is under construction with all the other rehabbing, siding, the roofing, electricity, every, everything's being, it's becoming a new old house. And things aren't going as, as quick as they normally would with COVID and supply problems. But it's, it's going ahead.
Okay, and I, I should go backwards. Maybe I should have started by your introduction. That this project emanates from a variance application that was approved by this board. I think it was two years ago, and it's attached to the engineer's report and
Mr. Wong, please speak into the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. So, Mr. Wentworth has proceeded with the project, with the renovation. And this is kind of the final little parcel of it that we have to come back for. And, Mr. Wentworth, what is the reason for this application?
Just to get a deck that works with the house and also to get a ramp that comes off of the, the curb cutout.
Okay, what was the size of the deck that was on the house before it was removed?
It was basically eight feet, eight feet wide. And 30.
Could you speak up, please?
Eight, eight feet. Eight, eight by 28. And I'm asking for a 10 by 36. Which basically covers that part of the house.
So since you came in with the, for the initial variance request, when you wanted to move in the house and doing all this work, some things have changed that you needed to add this ramp and a few other things in your life?
Last year I had it be replaced. I still have one more to go. So I'm not as
Mobile as you were.
I'm not, I'm not thinking I'm going to be as mobile in my older age.
So that's why this was not in the original plan that was approved here when you were coming before, before, correct?
Correct.
And a part of this is in the right of way, correct?
Just the end of the ramp to, so that it can join the road.
So how did we handle that this time?
Well, let's, let's, let's get the front 136.6 square foot patio and walkway with permeable paper system. Is that flat to the ground?
Where, where is that?
That's on the St. Peters roadside.
It's already approved. That's put approved.
Is that, oh, yes.
I don't think that was
So we've got a walkway that goes off the property. Is that flat to the?
The property, the property line is about a foot and a half off the, off of the front of the house.
Right. I'm trying to get the proposed walkway. Has that been approved?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So the only issue in the street is the ramp.
Right. And that was, that was where previously there was a sidewalk that I, I removed.
Yeah.
And and the town engineer put a, a curb cutout there for, they, they just redid all the Belgian blocks. Did the re-drainage and repaving of the whole area in front of my house.
Okay.
And there, it'll actually they elevated the curb at that front entryway and it, it would behoove me to have the ramp at, at a, an accessible height. It'll, it'll work to the deck.
Where do you park your car?
The parking is on the other side of the house.
Okay, so this ramp would serve whose purpose?
Me, if I.
Want to come out the front?
Yeah.
So you could go down that ramp to the street and around your house to go to the, to your car, right?
Yes.
That's the purpose of the ramp? You don't have an entrance to your house on the other side?
Gives me access to the street at a, at a workable elevation.
I mean, do you park along St. Peters Road, leave your car there, get out and go in the house?
No, it would be
You go around a corner?
Yeah.
Generally, it's important to understand the topography of the neighborhood. Where Mr. Wentworth parks his cars on the one side of the house and he has to take stairs up into it. Someday down the road, he's not able to take those stairs up into it. It'll have this ramp. But more importantly, on the other side of the house is this ramp so that provides access to the house to the living area from two sides, which I think is a good thing for a house. But more importantly, Mount Tabor is a real walking neighborhood. And so like Mr. Wentworth's friends and relatives actually will be walking to his house. And there's not much in a way of street parking in Mount Tabor in this area. But one of the things that also changed that Mr. Wentworth pointed out, but may not come, came across is this past summer, they installed the Belgian block curbing in the street. So that now one of the accesses that might have been there is no longer there. And instead it was put over by where the ramp is in anticipation and honesty that we would be making this application.
The, the plan says approved, who by who?
The, the, the Board of Adjustment here approved.
Right, was, it wasn't, anything, you have anything in writing in front of the township?
I'm sorry?
You don't have anything in writing in front of township that they have addressed this, this issue?
I'm not, I may have misspoke. I'm not quite sure what the question is.
Anything within the right of way, it has to go in front of the governing body, the township.
Okay.
So that's what I'm asking.
We have nothing from, from the town as far as, at the town council as far as that's concerned, if we have to do that. This is a very small area and it, you know, virtually every house has something built in the road right of way, whether it's your driveway or your, your steps. Especially in Mount Tabor, there is, I, I can tell you factually that there's probably 100 houses in Mount Tabor that have something built in the road right of way. We've heard all the variances on all 100 of them too. What's that? I said, we've heard the variances on all 100 of them too, so.
Have you talked to the construction department about the temporary ramp if it's required or if that's available, something like that?
The previously approved is, is short of the it wouldn't, it wouldn't work as far as a ramp. It would be more like a bridge. When you extend the, when you extend the deck out, the point transfers easily to one on 20, one on 24.
So you haven't talked to anyone at the township level regarding the proposal or what was approved? I'm, I'm a little
It's not that it hasn't been approved. You know, the, this is the application for approval. We have not talked to anybody at the town level about constructing the, the end of the ramp in the road right of way.
The other, the other improvements in the front of the house in the right of way, they are marked as approved.
And they were approved by the Board of Adjustment at its meeting. And that's the town, the zoning person that reviewed it. I don't think that's their comment.
So if, if the board did approve it, would probably, it would be subject to the town engineer as well as the town council?
We're, we
And you would agree to that?
We would agree to that. If the town engineer requires us to go to town council, we will. But I, I, but I have to tell you, in fairness, in Mount Tabor, this, this would be a, a huge change in procedure.
But we can't, we, this board can't grant something that it is not allowed to grant, which would be to
Despite what you say, we've got a bunch of applications in Mount Tabor. They pretty much stay within their outlines.
Oh, I, I'm well aware of that, but I can point out to you 100 houses that are not.
They didn't come in.
So is, Chaz, is your concern that they haven't asked the town about the building on the right of way?
Right, anything over the property line, they would have to get
We're okay with being subject to the town engineer's approval, and if he requires us to go to the town council, we will. Besides the issue of the encroachment, is there any other issue that any member has with this application?
That seems like a fair environment.
Okay, you're okay, Mr. Holloway?
Yes.
Yeah.
How's the renovation going? Did you find anything funny in there?
Taking six months for appliances, eight months for a sliding four panel door, things, things like that.
There's nothing else you'd like to add, right? There's nothing else you'd like to add, right?
No, no.
Are any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application? Oh, first of all, does any member of the public have any questions of this witness on the testimony given this evening? I hear none and see none. Is there any member of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application? In support of this application? I hear none and see none. You don't want to sum. You're, you're good with your case. Quick comment by someone?
Yeah, I'm going to be voting for it because they also, it's de minimis in nature, but I also think it's safety driven.
Yes, I agree.
So I'm, I'm going to be voting for it and I suggest my colleagues do so as well.
Subject to the engineers?
Subject to the engineers of
Of the right of way.
Okay, someone frame a resolution?
Application 21 colon 84, Kevin Wentworth. 29 St. Peter Road, block 66, lot 11, zone R dash three. To grant, recommend to grant issue, see variance to construct an open deck, landing and stairs, wooden ramp. Portion in right of way contrary to section 430 dash 35, column four and section 430 dash 10I. Subject to engineering report.
Second, Jaskowitz.
Any questions? Nora call the roll.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Karik.
Yes.
Mazarella.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes, Willens.
Yes.
Ira Kane.
Yes. This office of variance is granted. We memorialize it at the next meeting. Thank you very much. We have a water break.
All right, well, now I've had one done. I don't need the other one, so I'm great. Good luck. Good night.
What are they doing over at Crest Farm? Are they putting like a salt shed in there?
Yeah, so as you know, the town owns the property. One, the old iron building, the old site. It's really a good use of it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was thinking, yeah. But, yeah, I mean, do you think it's like subs, I mean, it looks like they just, there's some plywood up there.
Well, it's certainly not keeping it historic preservation, but if that's what you're getting.
Yes, and Nor do I think it's going to last more than like 85 years because it's, it's, it's raw wood. It's gonna
The idea was the town is spending a fair amount of money to store salt.
Yes.
And it's already dropped, it's more convenient to that side of town. It doesn't cost any money, so. Even though I'm not fully fair, I'm okay.
They could make a nice, put a nice, like
Nora, you ready?
Yes.
Announcement is made that adequate notice this meeting has been given and is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10 colon 4 dash 666 of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, please call the roll.
Berkowitz, not here. Jaskowitz.
Here.
Kaplan.
Still here.
Mazarella.
Here.
Karik.
Here.
Ready.
Present.
Snyder.
Here, Willens.
Here.
Ira Kane.
Present.
We also have our board planner, Mr. Chadwick, our board engineer, Mr. Holloway, and our board attorney, Mr. King.
We will suspend the pledge of allegiance because we did that at the seven o'clock meeting. Are any members of the public have any business to be brought to this board that is not on this evening's agenda? I hear none and see none. Let's go into resolutions. Chow, M3 Capital. Capadia, Ashar. Alpha Investments. Blue Foundry Bank, Coglin, and Skirty. Can everybody vote on them?
Most of them.
Tell me which one.
It's everyone, everyone should have their
Oh, okay. Who can vote? All right. I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
Everybody He looks like Jaskowitz.
Jaskowitz was not, okay, Jaskowitz, 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 Jaskowitz. Jaskowitz, Jaskowitz. Okay, let's go with Chow, Capital. Capadia, Ashar. Alpha. Blue Foundry Bank. And Patel. Somebody move those?
Second, Snyder.
Do we have to do Patel separately because we?
That was a deny, that was a denial.
So we should do that one separately?
Yeah. You can, yes.
Okay, so up to, let's do up to Blue Foundry Bank was moved by Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
There a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Nora call the roll.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Karik.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Willens.
Yes.
Ira Kane.
Yes. Okay, Akshaya Patel, 47 Rockaway Boulevard was voted dismissed. Do I have someone move the dismissal?
Vote.
Snyder, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Nora call the roll.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Karik.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Willens.
Yes.
Ira Kane.
Yes. And then we have Coglin and Skirty. Somebody move those?
So move Snyder.
There a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Nora call them.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yep.
Mazarella.
Yes.
Karik.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Willen.
Yes.
Ira Kane.
Yes. Okay, let's go into the agenda. Hemant and Perina Shah, are you present? Please come forward. 60 Hoffman Avenue. See variance to construct an open deck with landing and stairs.
You both raise your right hand. You swear firm testimony you're about to give before the board's true selfy God. And for the record, you're Hemant and Perina Shah. You're the owners of the subject property. Thank you. You're sworn. You may have a seat. Mr. Chairman, all your witnesses are sworn.
Thank you. And you are in an R3 zone?
R4.
R4 zone, oh, sorry, R4. And you've got a conforming lot of 6,000. You're only looking for a 3.3% yards and courts variance, open deck. Is it going to be spaces between the boards? Or is it going to be tongue and groove?
No, it, uh
Spaces?
Open.
Okay, so there will be a, there will be some water that can penetrate the, penetrate
It's gonna be composite wood. And it's, there isn't, there will not be any gap.
There will not be any gaps.
Usually there are little gaps.
Yeah, little gaps.
Slats?
Yeah.
They're like slats.
Slats.
And they're gaps.
That is, I saw it, yeah.
Do you know what tongue and groove is? That's where the wood goes like this and it connects and it makes one continuous?
Yeah.
And I'm sure my my explanation is very primitive. So, okay, so the water will be able to go between the boards. And what's underneath the deck? What will be underneath the deck? Earth?
Yeah.
Earth, okay. So you've got a minimal amount of impervious coverage that will be caused by this dock deck. You're only looking for a 3.3% increase. You're not asking for any side yard setbacks, rear yard setbacks. You don't have any of that. Okay, looks like you've got a conforming shed back there, okay. Any other questions by the board?
No.
Questions? No, Mr. Holloway, you're okay down there?
Yes.
I don't want to forget you. I can't see you anymore. Any members of the public have any questions of these witnesses on testimony given this evening? I hear none and see none. There's nothing else you'd like to add, right? You're, you're okay?
Nothing.
Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application, in support of this application?
There's a letter from the township engineer.
Oh, there is? Thank you. I didn't see that.
At two points.
Is it anything, anything?
It basically says that if the improvements cause any interaction with the neighbor, that they have to address the issue.
And you would agree to do that, correct? If there's an issue with the deck and the neighbors have a, maybe a drainage problem, correct that?
Whatever needs to be done, yeah.
Okay, that'll be put in the resolution, subject to that.
Okay. Any members who wish to speak in opposition to this application? In support of this application? I hear none and see none. Someone like to make a recommendation?
I'll be voting for it.
De minimis application, Mr. Willens. Someone frame a resolution?
I will. Application 2137, Hermant and Pernima Shah, 60 Hoffman Avenue, block 501, lot 7.01, zone R4. That we grant the see variance to construct an open deck with landing and stairs contrary to section 430 dash 10I. With the condition that all the points made in the engineer's report are met.
Second, Jaskowitz.
Any discussion? Nora call the roll.
Berkowitz. He's not here. Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Karik.
Yes.
Mazarella.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Willen.
Yes.
Ira Kane.
Present. I'm, yes. Result of the variance is granted. We will memorialize this at our next meeting and you'll be free to proceed. Enjoy your day.
Thank you very much.
Application 2186, Sushan Sai, 25 Bramore Court, lot 208. See variance to legalize a 5.6 foot, I'm assuming that's 5.6 foot, high solid fence. Good evening.
Both of you provide testimony? Could you raise your right hands? You swear firm testimony you're about to give before the board's true selfy God? And your names are Sushan Sai? S U C H U N Sai, that's you. So you will not be giving testimony?
My husband.
Will he testify? Okay, what's your name then?
Peter.
Peter? Peter Sai?
No.
It's a good name, Peter. Up for debate. Thank you. You're sworn. You have a seat.
Okay, so you're, you're, you're on that little cul-de-sac that borders on Littleton Road?
Yes. 25 Buyma Court.
I, my house is in Bramar Woods.
Oh.
And Bramar Woods was built off of Knoll Road. And the name of the street is New England Drive. It was built by the same people.
Oh.
My house is 50 years old, but, so I always noticed that that was Bramar Court. Same, same builders though. I know the builders. Okay.
Was built in 1990.
1990. Our house is built in 71. Nineteen ninety, my house is built seventy-one. Okay, so, um, I see your fence is along Littleton Road.
Right.
And it's, and, and by five point six feet, it means it's a little over, it's like five and a half feet, is that correct?
But...
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
And it's a solid fence, there's no opening at the top or anything?
No, but the, we purchased this house in year two thousand thirteen, and the fence was already there.
Oh, the house was, the fence was already there when you bought it?
Right, so we made a big effort to contact the previous owner, and he told us he put in the fence in year two thousand and four. So the fence has been there for over seventeen years.
Yeah.
And the two oh two is higher than our property. So the two oh two is like three feet, and our property is three feet down. So now the five point six fence is actually less than four feet. So if you walk on the two oh two, you can see all our property.
What triggered this application?
Somebody just give us a ticket and say, they could not find a, a petition for permit. But I contacted the previous owner, they say at that time, they were told, no permit was required.
You got, you got a notice from the zoning department?
Yeah.
That you had to come here?
Right.
Okay. What's, what's, um, along the Littleton Road, two oh two, you have the fence, and then the fence also goes along what appears to be the southernly border. What's be, what's the other side of that, of that property? If you, if you're standing in your front yard, and you're looking straight through to the backyard, what's beyond you? Is there another house?
Yeah.
Yes.
And how close is that house to the fence?
Our...
Approximately?
Our property.
Twenty-five feet, thirty feet?
You mean from the fence to the house?
Oh, back yard.
Oh, that doesn't, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm thinking, okay, never mind, forget what I said, thank you. So you're here, you're not, you haven't changed anything from the time you bought the house?
We haven't changed anything.
As a grandfather.
I, I can see you have extenuating circumstances. One, you didn't put the fence up.
Right.
I'm sure you bought the house in good faith that the fence was there illegally. You, you have a, a, a major thoroughfare in this, in this town, and I'm sure there's times when that traffic is backed up unmercifully. You have, and, and you, and even with five point six feet, you don't have a lot of privacy.
No.
It's fifteen feet from the, um...
Oh, yeah, and, thank you, Mr. King. And it, and it's also fifteen feet, so you're not right up, it's not fifteen, it's fifteen feet from the property line. So you're not on the, you're not put, you didn't propose to put it right on, right on the, on the right wing?
No.
Any other questions by the board?
What's the condition of the fence?
It's still very good, very solid fence, so if we have to take it down, it's a big effort.
I would just say this, I guess, in my opinion, that if the day comes that you're going to replace it, you should be conforming. So you will change it where it is four and one.
Sure.
If you get approval from the board.
Sure.
You know, I, I, why are we doing that? Uh, why are we doing that?
Why are we doing what?
She is in a cul-de-sac, it's really her by herself out there, she's right next to a major thoroughfare, and, you know, and, and I, I get the historical adversity, or, yeah, adversity to six-foot fences, but that's when Parsippany Troy Hills was a, a, you know, a summer vacation where people came to vacation at lakes. Now, we are bustling, a bustling area, and there are privacy issues, and she's clearly has, has it, and extenuating circumstances uncover that.
We're not doing anything now.
No, but I just, I, I don't know why we're gonna put a condition on, you know, whether the fence comes down.
It was a suggestion.
Yeah, but again, I would, I would appeal to why, why are we doing that?
I think probably what would happen, if they did come, um, to change the fence, construction would, you know, flag it, and, and they would, if they proposed something other than the fifty percent, would probably come.
If they demolish this and construct a new one, and...
Just preventative.
Yeah, she's just right next to Littleton Road, uh, you know, it's a heavy congested area.
I agree with you, but...
I can guarantee the town will never know they replaced the fence, because they can't find paperwork.
Right.
Okay, so if we grant them the five feet, point six...
As is condition.
That will be forever.
Okay.
All right, and I personally have no problem, I think it's...
I don't either, just...
It's a situation where we're helping out, uh, our neighbors.
Okay.
Any other discussion by the board, any other questions? Any members of the public have any questions of these witnesses on the testimony given? I hear none and see none, there's nothing else you'd like to add, right? Are there any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application? In support of this application? I hear none and see none. Recommendation, gentlemen, ladies, um, de minimis?
Yeah, de minimis.
I love that word, de minimis.
There's a, actually, there's a micro de minimis.
Micro, I have to remember that one.
Micro.
Okay, uh, somebody frame a resolution.
An application twenty-one colon eighty-six, Sushan Sai, twenty-five Bramar Court, block two oh eight, lot sixty-one point oh nine, zone R3, that we grant the C variants to legalize a five point six, uh, high foot fence, um, solid fence, contrary to section four thirty dash eleven A and B.
Second, Eddie.
Any discussion, Norah, call the roll.
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Parek.
Yes.
Mazarella.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Willans.
Yes.
Ira Kane.
Yes, result of this variance is granted. You'll get the paperwork in the mail, you don't have to do anything, so when you get the paper in the mail, just put it in a safe place, just in case the, the town ever loses it, because they very well could, so.
Thank you so much.
Oh, you're quite welcome, enjoy.
Don't make me come over there.
I'm not saying Norah would lose the paperwork. Okay. We now have case twenty-one ninety-seven, Michelle Cavalier, ninety East Halsey Road, a D variance for the operation of meditation services. Please come forward.
Ma'am, we would be testifying, are both?
Both.
Raise your right hand, you swear firm testimony about before the board's true self, you got?
Yes.
And for your record, um, it's Michelle and David Cavalier?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mrs. Cavalier, good evening, Sergeant.
Good evening.
How are you guys doing?
Doing well.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, based on my reading of the, of the application, is you're proposing a small office. You wanna tell us a little bit about your background or whatever?
Yes, um, good evening, members of the board. My name is Michelle Cavalier, I am a licensed massage therapist, and previously worked at Denville at the Emery Muse for fourteen years. I have since developed herniated discs in my neck, and can no longer pursue my career as a massage therapist. I am now pursuing a career in sound healing and Reiki services. Sound healing includes guided meditation sessions and gentle playing a sound healing instrument. I have completed education in this area through training courses and certifications. There are no license requirements for sound healing at this time, but the profession is growing and going more mainstream. I understand that my profession is not permitted in an SED five A zone. I am proposing to operate in a one-room office at ninety East Halsey Road, suite three five nine, on the third floor. This building is three stories, and occupants include therapists, nutritionists, wealth managers, and many other businesses. My request for a use variance is de minimis, and my business is similar to many other businesses there. My practice will require no significant parking, as I will only be seeing one client at a time, all of my clients are adults. There are no safety issues, no pollution is being generated, there will be no impact on any residential neighborhood, as the closest house is over a quarter mile away. No signage is required. I understand that a D variance requires a greater degree of proof. It is my understanding that a certified planner is generally required, however, I do not believe that my application is that significant as to require a planner. And I do have two forms to submit, one is a list of businesses that are currently leasing at the property, and I also have a better photo of the location and more information about the building itself.
So we'll mark that as A1 and A2.
Do you have a suite number, or...
Yes, suite three five nine.
And these are just better, these are better pictures of what you submitted to the application?
Well, you said you have no signs, you're not gonna have a, don't they have a ID sign out there?
In the, in the main lobby, there's a ma- a sign, I will be on that, and there's a sign directly outside the suite door. There's just no signage on the outside of the building.
Oh, as is its location?
Yes.
Okay. What, what will be your hours of operation?
Um, I plan on working Monday through Friday, uh, between the hours of ten and eight P.M.
So you're not playing any weekends at this point?
No, not at this time, unless it is warranted at some point.
Will you be providing any services?
No, my services are only on the, uh, legal papers. If anything happens to my wife, I have, I'm on the bank accounts.
So you won't be doing the sound?
No. I'm familiar with the business, through her training and all, but, uh, again, only the legal papers.
I wanna back up, you said you don't plan to do weekend hours, but if business requires it, you would do Saturday mornings?
I'm willing to put in, in the time, and it really is...
The type of uses that are in there, I'm sure, a lot of them, weekend hours. Okay. Right now, this is just for you to do, uh, the business goes well, you might bring in some additional professionals to assist you?
At this time, I'm planning on it just being me. Um, but I learned to say never say never, so...
But, but the space itself would don't, it's really a one room, so if you were gonna expand, you'd have to leave.
I would, yes, there's only enough room for me and my client there.
And all the other, uh, people that, uh, the people that own the building welcoming you and...
Yes, yes, in fact, the property manager said you're definitely welcome here, and if you've had any more questions, to contact her.
Any other questions by the board? Any members of the public have any questions of these witnesses on the testimony given this evening? I hear none and see none. You're, there's nothing else you'd like to add, right?
No, not at this time.
Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application? In parting me in support of this application, I hear none and see none. De minimis application?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, give us a resolution, somebody. We need five affirmative votes, don't forget.
Yeah. Application twenty-one ninety-seven, Michelle Cavalier, ninety East Halsey Road, blocks seven thirty-seven, lot nine, zone SED dash five A. We grant the D variance for the operation of meditation services.
Second, Eddie.
Any discussion, Norah, call the roll?
Jaskowitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Mazarella.
Yes.
Parek.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Willans.
Yes.
Ira Kane.
Yes. Result of the variance is granted, you'll, uh, will memorialize this at the next, your next meeting, and you'll be able to get your papers, so, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, you, so, we need it. Really?
Norah, who gave us the cool car paper clips for the car application?
Our next applicant.
Okay, next, uh, Mr. Paul Miller, eighty-one seventy-nine Route forty-six, C variants to install signage. My goodness. Yes, no, it's, it's cool. It's cool.
Members of the board, my name is Michael Sullivan, I'm from the firm of Stickel, Koenig, Sullivan, and Drill at Cedar Grove, New Jersey. I'm here on behalf of Paul Miller Inc., doing business as Paul Miller Audi. The subject property is one seventy-nine Route forty-six east, it's known as block seven six seven, lot four point oh two, in the B2 zone. We are here, uh, applying for sign variances for three signs as part of installation of a larger sign package. Additional signs have already been approved, they've received zoning permits, but they have not yet been installed. Two of the sign, two of the sign variances relate to, uh, exceeding the number of building signs allowed. We also have a pylon sign, which is sixty-five square feet, where sixty square feet is allowed, which we think is de minimis. Um, I have, Michael Tobia is my one planned witness. I was handing out, uh, I can exhibit, what we did was, we submitted with the cool car paper clips, or flips, a cover page with fifteen sheets, but we're really primarily gonna be referring to four of those sheets, so what Mr. Tobia just handed out was sheets two, three, four, and fourteen of that.
You don't wanna mark it, you've already marked it.
I don't think so, it's part of the larger...
Okay, just for ease.
So, again, I have Mr. Tobia to my right, but I also have present, uh, Nick DeVita, he's the facilities manager for Paul Miller. And I also have Ron Yendo, he is the operations manager for EM Signs, they're here in case some question arises. So I would ask that Mr. Tobia be sworn in at this time.
Raise your right hand, you swear firm testimony you're about to give before the board's true self, you got?
Yes, sir.
And for the record, your full name is?
Michael Tobia, T O B I A.
And your testimony will be?
I'm the planning consultant, I'm the guy.
And all your licenses are in full force and effect?
Yes, sir.
Have you qualified before this board and other boards in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, many times.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the witness has been sworn and qualified.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Tobia, why don't you go ahead, just give us a little introduction of what's being proposed as part of this application? Okay, so, um, hello, everyone, um, this is an application for a, uh, a bunch of signs, uh, for Paul Miller Audi. As you know, it's an existing dealership with existing signs. Um, this application is part of corporate required, um, sign overhaul. It involves, um, a new font, a new design for a sign, new background colors, and so on, um, mandated by Audi at the corporate level. And, um, basically, what it's gonna do is replace all the signs on the property with this new sign package.
How many on the property now? How many are you replacing?
How many?
How many current signs are you replacing with the new signs?
So there are one, two, three, four, five signs that are being replaced? Okay.
So there's currently five signs on the property, and all five will be replaced?
Yes, everything gets replaced or refaced. Is it seven, I'm sorry? Seven, um, and we'll explain that in a second, but, um, everything gets, uh, replaced or re-refaced, okay? So, uh, what we know from our building department here is that three of the signs, um, notably the Audi logo signs, which appear at two spots on the façades, as well as the Paul Miller copy, um, have been previously approved or permitted. Building department has said we do not need variance relief for those three signs. Best thing to do, folks, is go to sheet two of the handout we just gave you, and that'll show you the front facade of the building. Upper center of that illustration is the Audi logo that we're all so familiar with, and then the other copy, um, you'll see is Paul Miller and Audi. For the purposes of zoning, we have actually counted those two signs as separate signs, even though it's one line of copy. We only need two variances. One is for number of wall signs. Uh, one is permitted here in the B2 zone, five are proposed, okay? And those five are two Audi logos, the copy that says Paul Miller, the copy that says the word Audi, and if you go to the third page of your handout, you'll see, um, that a new sign is proposed over the service bay doors that simply says service.
So let's give you a moment, of the five sign on the building, five of them there now, or four there now, and you're adding one more?
Four there now, we're adding one more.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Great.
And that's the service sign?
No, that's the Audi copy, okay? Um, there is a service sign there now, and as I said, remember, replaced or refaced. So the service department sign will just more or less be replaced with a same copy, okay?
Is there currently just one Audi sign you're going to two, is that what it is?
Am I following that correctly, or? Because I see the one on page 2, is that the same one in the picture on page 3?
The one on page 2 is a new sign, the Audi in red.
I'm talking about this one on page 2. That's there already?
It is, and it gets replaced. And then go to page 3, please. And that's one that faces west. So if you're driving on 46 Eastbound, that's the first wall sign you're going to see.
And that's there now already?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So one variance, which I'll talk about first, is five wall signs are requested by this applicant. One is permitted. If you look, I guess on sheet 2 would be the best thing to look at. The ordinance does require, or does permit, I should say, one wall sign, but it permits it to go up all the way to 150 square feet, which means if we did one big box sign up at 150 square feet, get a permit and we'd be set. The proposal before you tonight is to do five signs with copy that would only add up to 101 square feet. We feel-
Wait one minute, I really got to go back on that. We're only here to look for the variance on one of the five signs. The other four have already been approved. Am I missing something here?
Three have been approved of the five. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, we have two wall signs to get approved tonight, is that correct?
That's right.
For the variances.
Okay, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, and that's a good point, although we're asking for five wall signs.
I got it, that's why I asked.
Yeah, three have already been permitted, okay? So we're being conservative in our request, okay? So, the applicant is proposing five signs dispersed throughout the facade rather than one big box sign. The applicant's only proposing 101 square feet in the aggregate for all five signs, rather than one that would be 150 square feet. Me, as a planner, thinks it's better to have several smaller signs than one big box sign. You know what big box signs look like along Route 46. We don't like them. Moreover, putting a sign over the service department provides vital direction for people who are now required, as you know, to pull their car right into the service bay. Okay, we're all, most of us are doing that at car dealerships. There's nothing unnecessary about what's going on here. Every dealership has a logo. Paul Miller is a brand name. Audi, obviously, is the auto name. That's the request for five signs instead of one, okay? If you go to the final page of your four-page handout, we'll talk about the other variance request, and that's a pretty modest one. It's the freestanding sign, and there is a freestanding sign out on Route 46 right now. It's called the pylon. On the left side of the sheet, you will see the illustration of the new sign. This is an application to replace the old one at the same location with the new one.
So the old one wasn't approved?
I'm assuming the old one was approved with, you know, prior application. This one is 65 square feet in size?
It's 5 feet bigger than it's supposed to be.
It's all it is. Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Chadwick.
Like a 5 square feet?
Yes. Right. 60 is permitted, 65 is requested. Audi, like a lot of car dealerships, deal in standardized signs at the corporate level. They don't customize signs for individual sites. The 65 is requested as a variance. Note that our height is permitted at 15 feet and we only have one pylon sign proposed. The sign importantly not only says Audi and it not only includes the Audi logo, it has the street address on it, which we all like for emergency services and ease of identification of the site.
Just the Audi, Audi rings are illuminated from the inside?
Yes, they are.
Are just those, just the rings, none of the other signs?
It's all that. Yeah, and Paul Miller is also illuminated.
Were the original-
But that's existing also right now.
Were the signs that were there, were they illuminated?
Yes, right. The existing pylon is also illuminated, yes.
It's all existing, Chaz, there's no variances on any of this.
Okay, all we're talking about is size of that pylon. The other thing I'd point out on the pylon is this is your first identifier as you're driving down Route 46. It's the sign you see that identifies the driveway. So our ask there is de minimis, Mr. Chairman, at 65 square feet versus 60 proposed. I think that's 8% over. If you look at that pylon on the fourth page of the handout, Audi did not overdo it, okay? There's very little advertising copy on it. But we request that to be part of the standardized Audi package, and we think there are no detriments to that or the other signs requested by this applicant. We have shared with you that three of the signs are already permitted, and we would tell you, for the purposes of our legal requirements, what I've just shared with you, I feel promote goals A, C, G, I, and M of the municipal land use law. I don't see any detriments to what we're proposing. There are no homes anywhere near us. This might be the best sign package on Route 46 because it's so coordinated and planned. And that's basically our case, okay? And let me just say also, if I could, that we did receive reports from Mr. Chadwick dated September 21, which really had, 2021, there was really no substantive comments in there. Mr. Holloway's memo of October 10, 2021, same thing, really no issues to address, so.
Correct, I agree. I think it's easy to approve things like this when you have such a good business in town who keeps his properties in such pristine condition. And it's always, always, you know, it's an asset to the town.
And you know, Mr. Chairman, they own the properties across the street, dealerships across the street as well. They're just fantastic-looking buildings, so thank you for that.
Quick question in regards to the pylon and the illumination. It's not going to be illuminated any brighter than the current pylon, am I correct? No brighter, no, you know, no extended footprint of that brightness, okay?
These are backlight signs.
Understood, but I just want to be clear that it's not going to be any brighter than what currently exists. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any members of the public have any questions of this witness on testimony given? I hear none and see none. There's nothing else you want to add, is there? You're okay? Any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application? In support of this application? I hear none and see none. De minimis?
I'm sorry.
Positive, positive to the town?
Positive.
Thank you.
Let's have a resolution.
I can do it. Application number 2180, Paul Miller at 179 Route 46, block 767, lot 4.02 in the B2 zone. I recommend the board grant the C variance to install signage as described.
Second, ready?
Any discussion, Nora Calderon?
Berkoitsch, not here.
He's not here.
Josh Bulwitz.
Yes.
Kaplan.
Here.
Mizurella.
Sorry, yes.
Yes.
Faric.
Yes.
Reddy.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Willand. Ira Kane.
Yes. Results of variance is granted.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Good job, guys.
That is a good car.
I told him I would set up my laptop with the camera so that I could see him and he could see the camera, you know? And all I needed was a little time to, you know, to get it back. He's afraid of COVID, he's got so much vulnerability. He's got it to him and his wife and, you know, and the son with the- He had a brainstem stroke about 20 years ago. He's had heart issues. His wife has breast cancer.
Okay, let's call case 1903 Zoom. Mr. O'Neil.
Yes. We seem to have a problem. Hasn't seen the plans. Plans were delivered at 4 o'clock today. What are you wasting our time for?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, we'd like to come here and present to you what's on those plans and discuss them with the board.
I don't know. Mr. Chadwick, are you in a position to?
Well, I think it's more of a decision the board has to make, but the history of this is, this application has been languishing and being carried for months. And we are now down to the 11th hour in terms of a plan. I don't intend to review it tonight. I think you had way more than the opportunity to get this plan in, and you didn't.
And the board hasn't reviewed it either?
I don't know what the status of your application is in terms of dealing with it. Every time it comes up for agenda and it's carried, before I get into that meeting, I pull the old file, I'll go back, spend some time doing it. And I'm sure all the others do as well. So it's, I don't think it's really a planning issue. I think it's a policy issue for the board, whether or not you want to continue to extend. Because you're not going to have a report for myself. Chaz, I think you're in the same boat?
Correct, I don't have anything along.
Okay. So it's, it really comes down to whether you want to extend another time or dismiss it without prejudice.
Have you heard briefly on this matter?
Sure, go right ahead.
I'd like to do that by way of introducing a photo. This is a photo taken by our planner.
How are you going to introduce it, as what?
Exhibit A. This is a photo taken by a drone. Yesterday.
Did you get it from drone?
Right above. This photo shows the site as it was yesterday and is today. We'll have it approved here later by our witness. But what we're basically showing you is a site containing, I counted 88 cars. This site has been a mess all this time. We are here this evening to try to clean that up with this plan that we submitted with the site plan and the landscaping plan. To make a commitment to get this cleaned up, to solve the problems that are on site. All you see are just a lot of pavement, a lot of dead grass, certainly a lot of cars.
But the problem is, you heard the planner, he hasn't had time to review it. The engineer hasn't had time to review it. The board members haven't had time to review it.
He's not having time, he simply wasn't here.
I understand.
The public hasn't had time, the public hasn't had time to review it.
I acknowledge all of that. What I'm asking-
Well, you know, I drove past this yesterday and I can swear there were more cars there yesterday.
More than 88?
Well, I think those open areas in the front have cars, but I'll defer, that's... My memory isn't the best. So I make note of it every time I drive.
What I'm asking for is, I'm asking for the opportunity, whether it be tonight or somewhere down the line, to make this presentation, to resolve the problem that you all see in that photo on this site.
But how many cars are you proposing under a new plan?
64 cars.
But you got 88 cars here. Right. If you were decent people, you would have reduced it by 24 cars.
I totally agree with the chairman.
Well, the 64 proposal was discussed months ago.
That's true.
And it was not embraced, as I recall, by the board.
That is also true.
The site is currently approved for how many cars?
But it's still 64.
25 cars.
I think that's the issue with me, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I'm probably the only one on this board that heard the original application back in the 90s. And this is not what it was supposed to be. This was not the original plan. The original plan was supposed to be a limited number of upscale cars. This was supposed to be, these are supposed to be upscale cars only. And that has just gone into the crapper.
So my, my, my question is this, Mr. Chairman. I totally agree with what you said. I think we're not, our professionals are not prepared to issue any report or comments on it today. My concern is that if we put this off, or what, you know, send it back to them where they have to reissue, what happens in the months up until then that changes the condition that is going on now? It's almost like a game plan that they could have to just-
Extend.
Extend and delay until whenever.
No kidding?
Because, like you said, they could have went to 24 cars right off the bat just to show goodwill, even if we wanted it even lower than that.
Well, they should have got, they could have gotten 64 cars, Mr. Chadwick.
That's what I meant, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I meant. So they could have done that and at least shown goodwill. We haven't even gotten there.
Okay, so, so let's talk about our options here. We deny without prejudice, they refile, they get to, they get to keep their 88 cars, okay? Until they, until we hear this case again, and it just drags on and on and on and on and on, okay? We can hear the case tonight, which I don't recommend because we don't have our professionals up to speed on this application. Third op, third op, third proposal. We agreed to extend this case to, to, to postpone it to a future date with the condition that in the next seven days, they remove 424 of the cars and bring it down to 64 cars. Bring it down to 64 cars, and I think we will have the best situation.
But then no extension past that?
How do, you just-
Isn't there a fourth option denying without prejudice?
Yeah, that's what you said.
Deny without prejudice, but then they refile. Then they refile.
Can we deny with prejudice?
Yeah.
I don't know, Mr. Chadwick.
You could, yes.
Yeah.
Well, if you deny without prejudice, they can't bring back the same plan. So something was going to have to move.
Or if we deny with prejudice and they go to court and the court sends it back to us, which they probably will do.
Probably, okay.
So I hate to say it, in my humble opinion, the best, the best alternative is to extend, give them an extension. They remove 24 of the cars in the next seven days.
Mr. Chairman, my client is currently in the process of negotiating another location for those cars. So we would request two weeks, not seven days.
Okay, because we're not going to hear this case for three months anyway.
I just have one question, that's a, again, good, great, good rule. The variance that originally you're applying for is for us to approve from 25 up to 64 cars, is that correct?
That's where we're at right now.
I understand, okay. And so now you're willing to come back to see it, but that 64 hasn't even been approved, so.
I'm just saying, let's get, let's clean the place up a little bit before the next round. Because I don't want them keeping 88 cars here.
No, that's right.
That's, that's my, my concern. And if, and if we deny and then they, they go to court, and we're going to be back to square one all over again, starting at the beginning of this application. I, I don't know. If anybody's got a better solution, this is horrible, horrible, horrible.
Do they, are there fines for?
Well, they'd be back in municipal court because that, they got a summons, zoning violation filed here. That stops the music at the municipal court. And the board denied it tonight, then you'd be, reactivate the summons and you'd be back in municipal court. Am I correct?
Yes.
That is correct.
And let me take it one step further. Let's say that when you come back, the board does not approve the 64. And their approval, pardon me?
Then that's it for that application.
Well, they can go to court at that point too, Davey.
Yeah, okay.
Or you could accept a lesser number and that would be it.
Yeah. That's where I was going, that's where I was going to go with that, Mr. Chadwick. Obviously, the 88, you're in agreement is excess for the site, okay? But you think 64 is okay, but you're only approved for 25. That's still almost three times the approval. I'm not okay with that right now, okay? I have to tell you that, if I'm going to be sitting here and hearing it. So is there a number somewhere between that that you think would work for your business?
We'll have to take a look at that.
You made a comment that he's in the process of moving cars, but needing 14, 14 days. All the cars, are you abandoning the site?
No, we're not abandoning the site. He's overloaded on the site. He's negotiating with local property owner for storage of some of the cars. So we can get it down to the 64 cars, but we need two weeks to do it.
Yeah, you better, you better think about getting less than 64.
Yeah.
And how do you know you're going to get this?
64 may not work. You better figure out if you can get it down below that.
That was my-
Just for the fall back. Uh, right, does someone, are we in agreement with my proposal? I mean, I know it's, it sucks, but I mean-
It does, because then again, extend and extend and extend. I mean, that's the part I want to cut at the pass that they don't extend into perpetuity like we were talking about earlier.
You know, you know we're being sued on New Road.
Yeah.
Danny Realty.
Danny Realty, you know we're being sued there. And that costs us money if we get sued. But, Mr. Jaskowitz, you like my proposal? I know you don't like it, will you agree to it?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Reddy, will you agree to it?
Yeah, I agree to significantly reduce the number of cars.
I think the applicant's in agreement, the site is overstuffed and he's going to move cars into the process. My only question, if we save the 64, I'm not sure why we pick up that number, but if that's an improvement, shows some goodwill forward, I'd say let's take that stuff.
How do we know that by February 9th, we're going down to 64?
Because the zoning officer's going to be tasked with going over there. Or you're going to go over there on your way home from the pool.
I don't have a drone.
You have very competent zoning department.
I'm sure Mr. Faric is retired, he'd be happy to drive over.
Is it practical?
I can have somebody to sit there, yeah.
Yeah. Is it practical to reduce in two weeks? How the negotiations?
Can you get John McDonough 14 days from now? Take a picture and email it over here.
That's what you want?
We'll do both. We'll have the zoning officer go over there also. All right, so Nora, what, what's the carry date?
May 4.
May 4? Tell your applicant to sharpen his pencil, Mr. O'Neill. Tell him to sharpen his pencil. Okay, motion to carry this case to May 4 without any, without any notice and a written extension by Mr. O'Neill to May 31.
Motion.
Second gospel.
And a requirement that the inventory be reduced down to 64 cars, okay? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? I would just like the board to stay for about two minutes, the board only. Just for a little social, two minutes, okay? Just the board.
So I can.
Good evening. You're being escorted out.
I can see why.
So just for the record, this would be, is this, is this still like an executive session?
No, we're just having a little two-minute social, like we do when we go out for a drink. I might have brought alcohol, except that, you know, I buy everybody soda out in the machine, but.
Now you're saying drinking and driving is okay?
No, I said I have. Well, look, if you're going to drink and drive, just make sure you have a car. No, I don't drink and drive. I'm just saying, I have a bottle of wine. John, see you next week. We've got a special meeting now. Who did that? Good night, everyone. Get home safe.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Mr. King.
Do we need that lady's music?
What?
Where were you guys here? Ladies. You know, I, I mean, I hate, I hate to discuss this, but, and I'm sure you're all aware what happened to me last week in, in the press. If you want to call, focus, focus press. It's a poor excuse for, for press.
This is on record?
No, 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 no. This is a social. This is a social. Motion to adjourn?